Welcome everyone to the March 8th School Board Meeting. This meeting is now in session. I'd like to recognize and thank our Career Center Air Force JROTC cadets who will present the colors. If you would all please stand.
Color guard. And cut. Carry. Color. Forward. Art. Color guard. Hold. Post.
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Center. A. Forward. Art.
This evening is a little bit unusual in that we had some weather as you all know. Was that yesterday? And because of that, we had to make an early call on whether we could have our service awards, our APS employees who've been serving for many years would have been this evening, but we had to make an early call on the catering and the corsages. So that event has been canceled and I think it looks like you all got the memo that we were going to start early because of those awards. Now we're starting at 6:30. I do want to mention that our colleague Reed Goldstein is running a little bit late. He's hit traffic on his way back from work. So he will be here and certainly be here in plenty of time for our public hearing on the budget. We are now at announcements and tomorrow, March 23rd, the school board will hold a committee of the whole meeting at 8:30 a.m. in the school board conference room. I'd also like to share that on behalf of the school board, I sent a letter to Governor Northam asking him to veto House Bill 1204. This is a bill that affects the real estate property tax assessments for certain properties in Arlington, specifically golf courses, and if enacted would have serious implications on our county revenues, which would then have implications for our own school board budget. So I would certainly welcome anyone here, if you're interested, to please also encourage the governor to veto that bill. And I know the county board has been very active in that process. Board colleagues, do you have any announcements? Okay. Dr. Murphy.
Thank you, Dr. Cannon. And I've got a few announcements this evening that I'd like to share with you. And I want to start with our number one priority, especially in these times, keeping students safe. We've taken several steps here recently from the unfortunate tragedy that occurred in Florida, and that is to really review and practice with all of our schools and our staff around keeping students and staff and our community safe. As many of you know, also, some of our students elected to participate in the showing their, you know, demonstration of the walkout. And I want to thank the Arlington County Police. I also want to thank our staff for their support that they provided during that particular activity. I do want to remind folks, and we continue to practice this, and it's a dialogue we have with our principals. If you see something, say something. And I encourage that dialogue. We get great support from our Arlington County Police when we learn of things that are of concern to us. We also share a lot of this information to alert our community through the APS School Talk message. And I think the other piece that we're finding is social media is playing a part in sometimes students may be feeling threatened or bullied. And so if parents, as well as staff, are having conversations with many of our students about how they utilize social media and to use that in a very positive and proactive way, and if there are concerns, to please bring those forward to principals or the administration, because I think they can be, in many times, the best resources that we have. I also want to remind folks that Pam McLellan and her entire team is trying to build resources. We know that students, especially adolescents, may have challenges with drugs and alcohol and substance abuse. And so feeling the fact of peer pressure or knowing how to handle oneself in those types of situations, we're offering a variety of different resources that are located on our website. So continue to check that. We'll continue to push those things out about substance abuse. And there are a lot of resources that we have available online, but there are also a lot of resources in our staff, teachers, principals, coaches, counselors, that make themselves available to students that when they're feeling maybe these pressures or they want to know how to handle a situation, those folks can be accessed and also help students guide them in making good choices. I want to make you aware of an event coming up on April the 5th at Yorktown, and this is part of a hashtag #MeToo, what men, boys, and everyone needs to know. And this is concerning Sexual Assault Awareness Month. This is something that is being sponsored by Arlington County Government, Inova Fairfax, Doorways, the Arlington County Police Department, and many others. And this information has also been posted to Peachjar on all of our APS middle and high school websites, so you can access that information. Participants include Theo Stamos, the Commonwealth Attorney, Jay Farr, the Arlington Chief of Police, as well as Katie Crystal from the County Board Chair. So encourage folks to turn out for that. A lot of these collaborations or events with county and schools have proven to be very, very productive. I want to remind folks about our summer school and registration. So now is the time to be making plans. I'll progressively, as we move through the spring, bring to your attention upcoming deadlines. The first is coming up shortly after we return from spring break, and that is the deadline for elementary and middle school outdoor lab programs. You can access this information online or at your home school, or check it out on the website as far as seeing what's available for summer. It's also a good time to have conversations with teachers or your counselors about particular programs that students may want to explore a little bit further or see if they want to become involved in this summer. We also have registration underway for elementary option application, and those are online. And that goes through Monday, April the 16th. And we've got ongoing registration also for Primary Montessori. This is pre-K, as well as our Virginia Preschool Initiative Program. And you can bring those documents to the Syfax Education Welcome Center, or you can access some of this information right there at your local school to find out about how to make registration. We're coming here to the end of the third grading period, and I'm glad that we were able to only have one day of inclement weather out yesterday, so it gives our students an additional chance today and tomorrow to get caught up. We do end the grading period here a week after we return. And you can see the dates for elementary and secondary report cards. Other important dates to kind of be looking forward to is Monday, April the 9th is a grade prep day, so we have no school on that day. And then also, April the 11th is going to be an early release. This evening, as part of the budget, is a budget hearing. We've got an array of other meetings that are coming up. I'll just highlight some of the more significant ones. On April the 5th, at the next school board meeting, the school board will be taking action on proposing its budget. We also then have a hearing on April the 19th on the school board's proposed budget, and we're slated to take action on May the 3rd. I do want to highlight also, on April the 6th, we have a work session with the county board there at the county board, you know, board meeting room, and that's at 9:00 a.m. So that's a chance for the school board and our school to kind of share with the county board what we're thinking in relationship to our budget. Reminder, Dr. Kristy Murphy and our entire leadership here in Arlington has got the upcoming Instructional Recruitment Fair. We typically have a good turnout for this, so if you know someone who's interested in working here in Arlington, encourage them to come out. I encourage them also to bring, if they'd like, with them a copy of their resume, teaching license and certificate, and also a proof of eligibility either through a transcript or a letter from their university or college. And we usually have folks coming from far away on the East Coast, but now is a good time to either remind relatives or friends about our recruitment fair and the opportunities here in Arlington. So we're coming to the end here of being at the Ed Center. As we move into the first part of April, you'll see a series of transitions that we have, starting with planning and evaluation on the second floor and then through many of the other offices. The school board and the fourth floor will be moving here at the end of April. Our last school board meeting here in this facility will be April 19th, and then our first school board meeting is slated for May the 3rd at the new Syfax Center there on Washington Boulevard. And then finally, I know we are all looking forward to spring break, and I wish all of you a wonderful and safe spring break, whether you're traveling. I think the weather is going to promise to warm up a little bit, and it was good that we were able to only have a two-hour delay and return to school today. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And I'm told, Mr. Goldstein, you wanted to make a comment or an announcement. Welcome.
Thank you. Yes, my announcement is that I'm late for the meeting, for which I apologize. But I also wanted to announce that there was a 16-member team of 4th, 5th, and 6th graders from our Drew Model School in Gunston who traveled to New York City this past weekend, last week, to participate in the Montessori Model UN. And there were parent volunteers who were the driving force and coordinated the activity for the students. And once at the Montessori Model UN, after two days of student delegate committee work, mostly around UN sustainability development goals, the student, students from Drew and Gunston spoke at the General Assembly, in the General Assembly Room, from the podium there. And they were selected by their committees to represent them at the General Assembly, which earned them the privilege of speaking on the floor. And this is a direct result of the world education that our Montessori students receive at Drew and Gunston. And this is the second year in a row that Drew and Gunston had multiple speakers on the UN floor. And they, these student delegations talked about all, the whole range of issues that the United Nations, you know, talks about in their regular sessions, including sustainable development and rights of indigenous peoples, threats to international peace and security caused by terrorism, reduction of military budgets, and eradication of poverty, just to name a few. So I want to thank and commend the staff and parents who pulled that together for the benefit of our students. Just wanted to announce that. Thank you.
Yes, it's an excellent program. Thank you very much. Do you want to mention that I think we still have some open seats in the back? I see some folks standing. We do have some seats a little bit closer in the front. I know some people select to stand also, so, but if you do want to come forward, there are some more seats. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we had to, we moved our timing around a little bit because of the change that the weather had caused, and it was shared by email that our public hearing on the budget would not begin until 7:00 p.m. People are still arriving for that, and people do tune in at home. And so since that's the announced time, as the, you know, that the public hearing would not begin before that, we do not want to do so. So I'm going to switch the agenda around and do two fairly brief items, our consent, our consent items, as well as the superintendent's action plan update. So let's go to consent, and may I have a motion to adopt our consent agenda?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. As part of consent, the board appointed Deana Little to a vacancy on the Reed Building Level Planning Committee as the Arlington County Public Library Representative. Also, as part of consent, the board approved two facilities items. These are the Wakefield High School upgrade and reconfiguration of chemical safety devices and temporary license agreement for fleet parking at Jefferson. And these are both items that we saw for information two weeks ago. And with that, Dr. Murphy, I will turn it back to you for your action plan update.
All right. Thank you again, Dr. Cannon. I'm just going to lead us through where we are with each of the initiatives that we have rolled out this year. Dr. Natress is also going to assist me here, speaking directly to inclusion as well as acceptable use. And we've got several groups here that we've aligned each of the different activities with. The first group is dealing with new policies and policy revisions. And so one of the initiatives that we have is looking at school facility naming policy criteria. Linda Erdis and a team are looking at this. And right now, where we are with this particular initiative is the school board is slated in April and May to review and approve of a draft naming criteria. And then moving forward in the summer of 2018, the naming committee for four school projects will be looking at then developing a committee of ad hoc community members also to address the Washington Lee High School name. So we're kind of looking at it through two different lenses, because we've got a number of schools that are coming onboard. We need to update our policy with the naming criteria. And then the second piece is to look specifically at addressing Washington Lee High School. Let me turn to Dr. Natress, and she's going to talk a little bit about inclusion and acceptable use.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. So the first policy we'll discuss is inclusion. And right now, our work around inclusion is really focused with the Strategic Plan Steering Committee. We have elements of the inclusion work really embedded in that work. And then during the month of April, we'll get a little bit more specific and start looking at policies that are related to the work around inclusion. That includes policies like program differentiation, our special education programs and services. Grouping is another policy. And so we'll begin the review of those in April with some work around the strategic plan, and then in June, we'll do community engagement specific to the policies. So strategic plan first, and then the policies that are related to that. We will then bring forward some policies in the fall of next year, starting around September. The other has to do with acceptable use. As you know, we've been doing a lot of work in this area. On February 1st, the policy related to Internet was approved by the school board. We have three other policies that we are really working through. The one that you see as the second went down, the electronic technologies, acceptable use specifically for students. We are doing that particular policy first and expect to bring that to the school board for information in April. We're just finalizing the draft of that and compiling all of the feedback that we've received from the community and our various groups, including our principal groups, our advisory council on instruction, as well as several others. Then in late spring, we will actually start drafting two additional policies. One is the acceptable use policy for staff. One of the things we are doing through this process is breaking apart the two policies, because we felt like we should have a different policy for students than we do for staff. And then we will also be looking at the acceptable use of social media to really work through social media expectations for our students. And Dr. Murphy is now going to speak to the prep for new schools and program moves.
Thank you. So the second group is really looking then at new elementary school planning initiative. And I just want to, I'll go back and forth here, looking at this in two phases. This first phase goes through the end of this school year. And essentially, Ms. Stingle and her team are looking at the walk zone review, and they're also looking at this in context to the option schools that we have out there and evaluating that information to see if there is the possibility that as we look at boundaries, which is, that will be in Phase Two, that will start in the fall of 2018, whether we want to see if there perhaps are some efficiencies that we can realize through the walk zone, or there may be an equity issue about making some of our option programs more available to a larger number of students who might be interested. So right now, we're going through that process. The other evening, Ms. Stingle was, you know, supporting me with keeping our schools open through the end of the day, because she wanted to have a listening session, which I think was very successful the other evening. Staff will be coming back then, April the 12th, with those draft recommendations. We've also got some open office hour sessions, which will be some listening sessions based on the information that we're gathering. And then this is slated to come to the school board for information on May the 17th. So that'll complete Phase One. Whatever recommendations or ideas come out of that, that will then build into how we look at elementary, the elementary boundary process as we move through the second phase, and that'll be through the first part of the fall. The action then is slated for the latter part of the fall, so that will then begin to build into kindergarten registration and the implementation of the new boundaries in the fall of 2019, when we're opening up a number of new schools across the school division. When we move into Group Three, we've got several items here. One you're going to hear a little bit later this evening, and that's the Capital Improvement Plan. That is slated for information tonight, and then the board is slated to take action. The CIP process, or the Capital Improvement Plan process kicks off, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that after the budget comes to an end here on May the 3rd. We are also working toward our new strategic plan, which is 2018 through 2024. Right now, the team is very engaged, and I want to do a shout-out to the Strategic Plan Planning Committee. They've endeavored to put a lot of work into this, as well as getting feedback from the community. The next board meeting, we will have an update for the board and the entire community as far as where we are and the progress they are making. And then we've got this also slated for May for information, and then the first part of June for action. Tonight, I talked a little bit in my initial announcements about where we were with the budget, so this is really just a review, the number of work sessions that have been held, and the next work session that is slated for April the 3rd. When we come to Group Number Four, we've got capital initiatives, and due to inclement weather last night, the BLPC-PFRC meeting was canceled. But tonight, we've got slated an information item for the Reed Building for concept. The board is slated to take action then on April the 5th, and then the BLPC and PFRC will reconvene on April the 14th. Talking about the Career Center Working Group, I know they continue to do their work. They are slated to come forward here on April the 17th for a joint school board, county board work session at the Career Center. And we are continuing to move forward for the summer of 2018 for a projected enrollment growth of 350 students at Arlington Tech. So we continue to grow that program, and it continues to be very successful. And then as far as the Educational Center, we are going to be bringing to the board on, in April, the architectural selection process. This will also kick off the BLPC process after the architect is selected. And then we're looking at some possible alternative schedules for when this facility would be available. That's going to be connected, obviously, to the CIP discussions that are going to be happening in May. Just want to remind everyone, Engage is one of the best resources to find out information or to ask questions. And I want to thank the team in our planning office, who is very responsive in getting responses back when questions are asked. And you can kind of follow along there, and that information will continue to be updated. So that's all we have this evening. I don't know if there's any questions?
Well, let's first see if we have any speakers on this item. No speakers, okay, on the superintendent's update. Board colleagues, do you have questions or comments on the superintendent's update? No? We are still five minutes before our start time for the public hearing, so we will vamp a little bit. I will go ahead and read the comments, I mean, the guidelines for public comment. I also want to mention, we do have a number of people who've been arriving. I want to thank our executive leadership team for their great work in getting some chairs. And there are at least four seats in the very front, and I think other seats here and there on that side for folks who want to just come on up and find a place to sit. We do anticipate the public hearing lasting about an hour, so you probably want to sit. Okay? And while you're all finding seats, I'm going to go ahead and read our guidelines for public comment, and then we will start calling up the speakers.
Non-agenda's after that?
The school board welcomes public comment and generally allows up to 30 minutes for citizen comment on non-agenda items at regular board meetings. That's actually the section we're doing after the public comment. If you've not signed up online but would like to speak, you must submit a speaker slip to the clerk before the agenda item you wish to speak on is called, which reminds me, if you're just arriving, please get your speaker slip in right now. Speakers are called in the order in which they sign up. Each speaker may speak for up to two minutes, and there's a timer to help you keep track of your time. Speakers should conclude their remarks when the buzzer sounds. All comments should address a matter related to Arlington Public Schools. Speakers should be courteous and address their comments to the entire school board. Generally, school board members do not respond to public comment at meetings. If you have written comments, please give them to the clerk to distribute to the board. We do ask the audience to refrain from applauding. It does take time away from the speakers afterward, and we have a number of people who come here a lot who could demonstrate our knock that shows a sign of support. There's one that's a visual sign of support that we can all pick up on, but allows us to continue on to the next speaker. And with that, Ms. Elliott, I know we might have to delay by a minute or two, but perhaps you could get started calling up the speakers.
Yes, I will. First of all, I will display the list of speakers on the screen, so you can keep track of where we are. And I also will ask you to line up by the, between the two doors, by that first post, and that way you can come, I will call you up in groups of four or five, and that way you can come up to the podium more quickly, and we'll move more promptly. So our first four speakers are Josh Follb, Danielle Actiel, Pat Vankinis, and John Armstrong.
And just, it's going to be one minute. And just to clarify where we are on the agenda, for those who came to speak on non-agenda, that will be after our public hearing on the budget. We will do public hearing on the budget, non-agenda speakers, then we will probably take a little break, because a lot of you folks may choose to leave at that time. We'll take a break at that point and then go on with our business meeting.
Madam Chair, may I, may I share something with the audience, since we have a minute? I just wanted to share, we don't always get to share the opportunities that we get to experience in the schools, but this week, while the snow and the weather was starting to form, I was able to attend the IB art show at Washington Lee. And I want to say how amazing our artists are here in Arlington Public Schools. Some of that artwork was so moving. There were senior art IB students who'd been in IB art for two years. It was just impressive, the different medias that they used, the diversity of perspectives that they brought, the way that they shared their stories through their art. It was a wonderful experience. I also had the privilege today of attending the Esau-Hill Service Awards at Washington Lee. It was wonderful to see how many of our English language learners are excelling and advancing and improving. That was amazing. And Tuesday, what I did not get to attend was the Honors Concert for APS students, but I did hear that that was wonderful. So thank you for the many people who chose to come out on that stormy night. And it is arts in the month, it's arts, what is it?
Arts in the schools.
Arts in the schools month, thank you. So we have a few days. If you have any time to experience some of what's left, I encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Wonderful things going on in our schools. Thank you very much, Ms. Toledo. And with that, I think we can begin our public hearing.
Mr. Follb.
My name is Josh Follb. I am the Chair of the Arlington Education Association's Compensation Committee. I come here with some of my friends to remind the board of a few things. I come here with some of my friends to remind the board of a few things. First, I want to thank the board for never discussing the possibility of removing the step increase from the budget. Those of us who remember when the step was paused, remember the pain and loss of morale and the shame when things were chosen over people. May our benefits be preserved going forward. Further, if one-to-one is so effective and so essential, why is the cost so constantly obfuscated? I appreciate that the board is asking the tough questions to ensure the focus is on learning gains, not on every student having a device 24/7. Savings will be found while helping students grow into the world in which they will inherit. I want to remind the school board again that there are real current employees slated to lose their job under this budget, and I stand here today to ask again for public assurances that every employee who will be riffed through no fault of their own will be placed in the first available job for which they qualify. And next, while APS can be proud that they are offering a few more contracts to a few bus drivers and assistants who are currently hourly, we are still well below the number we know we need to run an efficient and effective school system. Our people make the difference, and until they have a contract, these hourly drivers and assistants owe APS as much as APS owes them. These are lean times, but APS must continue to keep their focus on the kids and what makes the most difference in their education. A high-quality teacher in every classroom backed up by only the best of support staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Ankil.
My name is Danielle Ankil, and I've been teaching for 18 years in Arlington. When you Google hero, there should be a picture of a principal, a school lunch worker, a custodian, a reading specialist, a teacher, or a bus monitor. Real heroes don't wear capes; they work in America's schools. This sentiment is from Nelba Marcus Green, a Sandy Hook parent whose six-year-old daughter was killed in her classroom in 2013. It still rings true. It's no surprise that the majority of the APS budget is for personnel. I'm fortunate to work with many of the best colleagues across the school system. Teachers are the ones who go to every evening and weekend event, are there before and after school to assist children, spend their own money for classroom supplies, and to attend professional development during non-school hours. We are the ones who adapt to the new systems, programs, and initiatives implemented every year. These new systems don't drive our passion or professional growth or change us as educators, but we learn them because of the promise of improved student learning. We are the ones who address the needs of the whole child, and we are in awe when a plan works and a child is successful because his teachers never gave up on him. I believe that every hero in our school system deserves more than what their paycheck reflects. Teachers continue to incorporate newly adopted rigorous curriculum, work with increasing class sizes, keep up with a variety of new learning and teaching technologies, personalized learning, and take on extra assignments when substitutes are unavailable. So, as you review the proposed budget, my hope is that you will keep the faces of APS heroes and the lives they touch at the forefront and honor them with well-deserved step increases and competitive salaries and benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Pat Vinkenis.
Good evening. My name is Pat Vinkenis, and I'm a parent of a Yorktown senior. I'm here to ask that you expand your support for the Challenging Racism Program. I am a current enrollee, and as my good friend and classmate Victor noted, this class is life-changing. It makes me think about the world differently. My daughter was one of the students who appeared before you last year when, to talk about the racism at Yorktown and the now infamous signs. Well, ultimately, the signs stayed. I'm sorry to say, the kids report that things are no better at Yorktown. Just last week, my daughter reported one of her friends was the target of a racist attack. Unfortunately, these incidents are all too common, so there's a critical need for programs like Challenging Racism. The achievement gap here in Arlington is well-known to you, and you may have seen the Washington Post article earlier this week that showed that earnings in middle age of minority boys are lower than whites, even when they grew up in the same neighborhood and had the same education. It's going to take the entire community to address these serious issues. And Challenging Racism is a chance to educate both parents and teachers, and the community is interested. The program had a waiting list of 40 people this year. So, I'm asking for your support for a three-year contract at $124,000 per year, which would include three Challenging Racism groups per year, dedicated spaces for Arlington Public School teachers, including facilitator training. In addition, the school system would be licensed to use the Challenging Racism materials. This partnership would enhance APS capacity to respond to community needs, which much more flexibility than it has now, and allow the Challenging Racism program to go. So, I would ask that you please direct the superintendent to include funding for this important program in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. And before Mr. Armstrong starts, the next four speakers will be Kristi Prestewick, Patty Tuttle, Susan Scott, and Donald Hess.
I forgot my glasses. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is John Armstrong. I'm the Chair of the Advisory Committee on Transportation Choices. As you know, ACTC is a joint advisory body of the county board and the Arlington School Board for the purpose of advising the Joint Committee on Transportation Choices. In the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget, the superintendent of APS has proposed elimination of the Transportation Demand Program. The program has a budget amount of $222,640. This program benefit offers school staff incentives to commute by carpool, by bike, by transit, or on foot. The school board's policy goal, 50-1 dot 1, states, "The school board encourages and supports efforts to reduce traffic and parking demand at its, at its facilities. Staff are encouraged to use public transportation, carpools, vanpools, and other alternatives to single occupancy vehicles to come to work. The superintendent will implement incentives that are practical and feasible to increase use of such alternative modes of transportation." This Transportation Demand Program is a crucial component of the implementation of this policy. This program ultimately saves the county space and money by reducing the number of parking spots needed at APS facilities. On March 7th, 2018, the ACTC voted to support a resolution, which you all have a copy, requesting that the Transportation Demand Program be fully funded in fiscal year 2019. The Transit Advisory Committee voted to support the resolution on March 13th. The Pedestrian Advisory Committee voted to support the resolution on March 14th. On behalf of these three committees, we ask that you fully fund the Transportation Demand Program for $222,640 in the fiscal year 2019 budget. Thank you.
Ms. Prestewick.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Kristi Prestewick, and I'm an instructional and library assistant at Campbell Elementary. I lead the outdoor learning program and help coordinate expeditionary learning. I'm enrolled in the, an accelerated master's program to become a teacher. I'm able only to afford and pursue this degree because I'm a participant in the Assistant to Teacher Program currently offered by APS. The latest budget proposal will cut the Assistant to Teacher Program, which funds assistants to obtain a teacher certification and asks recipients to teach in Arlington County for three years. It is effective because it allows on-the-job training while working and attending school. At Campbell, we have three instructional assistants enrolled in this program, and one of our teachers is a graduate. There are teaching assistants throughout the county who will be impacted by this decision. In his recent presentation on the proposed school budget, Dr. Murphy stated that we have a teacher shortage, where a people focus business, and that we invest in our people. Well, this program is a perfect example of investing in our people. When you mold assistants from within APS and make them into highly qualified teachers, you have less turnover, fewer hiring costs, and you promote diverse teacher backgrounds. I ask you to strongly consider continuing this program. I have worked with Campbell for five years in developing the outdoor classroom, and I know there are numerous assistants in the county just like me, just as dedicated to their schools. I started this program a year and a half ago, and I'm supported by the entire Campbell community, many of whom are here this evening. It was our principal that encouraged me to apply. The Assistant to Teacher Program is important to all of Arlington County. It gives those of us who are passionate and already invested in our school system the ability to become teachers in this incredible county. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tuttle.
I've taught middle school in Arlington for more than 20 years, and I'm an Arlington parent, and I'm here tonight to ask you to carefully consider the impact of your budget decisions on teachers. I've recently taught my seventh graders about the concept of opportunity cost, that every time we make a choice or a decision, we must consider not only the price of the choice, but the value of what we're giving up. When I read through the budget, I can't help but feel that some opportunity costs have not been considered. Input from those of us on the front lines is missing, so the true costs really can't be calculated. Many of my colleagues join me in this belief that our voice is missing from many decisions that affect our work, like textbook adoption, the use of iPads, and a very minor but clear example, the removal of personal appliances from teachers' classrooms. And this is not something I would follow my sword for, but it is a really good example. From a financial point of view, eliminating personal appliances from classrooms makes total sense. But if you consider it from our point of view, my building is overcrowded, we have no spaces for staff lunchrooms, takes eight minutes to walk around trip from my classroom to the staff lounge. I can work with students at lunch, or I can go heat up my lunch, but I can't do both. Eliminating appliances would save electricity, but it also would reduce the opportunity kids have to make up tests, ask questions, decompress during lunch in a quiet space. It also reinforces the message to teachers that our needs aren't important. Why not ask teachers what we could do to save electricity or money or use technology more effectively? I'm confident that we could identify many solutions if asked. The budget is full of choices that have significant impacts on teachers' work lives, and unless you involve us in decision-making, you won't have the information you need to make good decisions. Thank you.
Ms. Scott.
I'm a little humbled, actually. I'm Susan Scott. I'm a parent. I've been speaking at different budget discussions for over seven years. I've never seen this many teachers here. I want to say how much I respect everything that you do. I am here to make a statement in support for the board considering putting back in money for the arts specialist job at the Central and absolutely putting back in lead teacher, $1,000 a year. God, what a bang for your buck for that. And so, one of the things that just amazes me is that a good budget should show collaboration, discussion with lead staff, straight word, you know, straightforward communication to principals, straightforward, you know, documentation of being able to see where the funding is. This is absolutely, and I mean this with, with respect, but this is the worst budget I've seen. And I, I read these suckers, and I'm disappointed in that. The lead teachers are going to do this work anyway, so they're going to do overtime. They're going to make sure that people do this. They're going to make sure that they're not going to let their other fellow teachers down, and it disappoints me. For the arts specialist job, if you think about the critical path, and I'm not an MBA, but the critical path of any kind of a project is like, if you're going to get married, the critical path might be make sure you have a priest there. If you don't have the priest, you're not getting married. It's a critical path thing. Arts specialist is the only specialist of a team of three. Other teams at the Central, like math, et cetera, have two specialists. Take care of that one specialist. She's the only person who is certified to teach instrumental music. Right now, over at Kenmore, it's actually got postponed, the Honors Choir, Orchestra, and Band Concert is happening. 600 kids participate in that. That comes right underneath the arts specialist. One of my questions is, how do you expect to have 170 teachers who are teaching in the arts, 100% of K through five students, 50% of middle and high school students who get the arts curriculum going to have the same level of quality if you take the specialist out? Right now, last year, we got 4%, we were in the top 4% of districts across the nation to receive a national award regarding the quality of our education in music. That will go down. Thank you, and I hope you'll consider this.
Thank you. And before Mr. Hess, the next four speakers will be Ariadne Gurk, Susan Karen, Kia Haynes, and Jonathan Hui.
Good evening. I'm Chair of the Arlington Aquatics Committee, and the proposed budget calls for raising pool revenue by $55,000 by increasing general admission and membership fees by 5% and rental fees by 10%. Members of the Aquatics Committee are supportive of justified fee increases, but we believe there may be another source of funds to provide the $55,000 requested. Specifically, we are asking that the amount of funds transferred from the county to APS be closely evaluated to see if an increase is warranted for fiscal year 2019. In 2009, the county board and the school board adopted an MOU for operation and use of the pools at the three high schools. Per that MOU, the county appropriated $286,988 to APS for fiscal year 2010 for use by APS in operating and maintaining the pools. Per the latest version of that MOU, APS and county staff are to evaluate revenue and expenditures on an annual basis and recommend an increase or decrease to the annual transfer amount if appropriate. The transfer amount of $286,988 has not changed in nine years. During those nine years, the number of DPR programs and participants for swimming, diving, and water exercise has increased significantly. In the last nine years, fees for community swim were increased by over 35%. Fees for rentals were increased by over 50%, while the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers increased only 12.7%. The members of the Aquatic Committee do not believe that additional fee increases are currently justified. We strongly urge the county and APS staff to evaluate current revenue and expenditures for the pools in accordance with the MOU and determine if an increase to the transfer amount is warranted for 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gurk.
Thank you. My name is Ariadne Gurk, and I'm here this evening seeking the school board's continued support and expansion of funding for the Challenging Racism Program. I completed the Challenging Racism Learning How Conversations in 2017 at Jefferson Middle School, where my daughter attends, and was fortunate enough, through the board's support, to participate in Challenging Racism Learning to Lead Facilitator Training over the summer. Over the 11 weeks of the course, I learned about the lived experience of people of color within my community that I previously had not had the chance to learn about. It is not an exaggeration to say I was personally transformed during the Learning How Conversations. The trained facilitators, both Arlington parents, were easy to connect with and consistently demonstrated respect for all viewpoints shared from people in the room. The program materials were thoughtfully developed and were a mixture of substance and skill building in areas such as listening and having difficult conversations. But the greatest benefit of this program is how the skills practice supports the capacity to engage in tough, conflict-laden conversation, skills that the Arlington School community needs. The boundary and growth issues the school board and the community are struggling with could be tackled in a more productive manner if more people had the skills that the Challenging Racism Program helps develop, like constructively resolving disagreements based on respect and a deeper awareness and interest in understanding how different racial experiences shape our perspectives. I intend to continue developing the capacity and skills needed to help others like myself, ordinary members of our community who want to connect across racial lines to strengthen and improve our relationships with one another. The strategic goal of eliminating achievement gaps and growing support for racial equity is well-served by continued financial support for Challenging Racism. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Karen.
There's four of us. Is that okay?
Well, each one of you are given two minutes.
Yes, it's fine.
Well, then, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but you come first, but the rest of you need to line up behind the posts there.
Okay. Hello. Hi. When my husband and I decided to adopt a child from Korea, we made a decision that we would always provide our son with an ethnically diverse environment. And at the time, we didn't realize that we would be parents to both a gifted and a special needs child. In 1907, Dr. Maria Montessori opened a childcare center for children of desperately poor families and children who were labeled as unteachable. She created a method of education that focused on child-led learning with a whole-child approach. She was ahead of her time. This child-led learning and whole-child approach is what drew us to Montessori, and the ethnic and socioeconomic diversity of Drew sealed the deal. My special-needs son learns in small groups, can take his areas of interest beyond the basic curriculum, is in a classroom that provides the opportunities he needs to flourish because that is the way that Montessori teachers are trained to run a classroom. He's learning to be self-directed and to self-advocate. He's in a classroom where, when he feels overwhelmed, he can go to the quiet corner and put on his headphones, his noise-canceling headphones, and he doesn't feel like the oddball because Montessori teaches children... because Montessori teaches children how to be inclusive and accepting of other people's needs. He goes to a school with children that have sensory processing issues, as well as children on the spectrum, and children of all types of learning differences. Drew is a truly inclusive environment that is supportive of children's different learning needs. The current principal, Kathy Genovi, has been key in creating this inclusive environment. She is Montessori-trained and understands its inclusive, individualized, whole-child approach. The cuts to the program need to be done carefully, with guidance from Ms. Genovi, on the ways to keep Montessori program true so as not to diminish its foundation. My husband and I work outside of Arlington County, and truly, it is the Montessori program that keeps us Arlington residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Haynes.
I'm Cindy Bear. I'm standing in for Kia Haynes tonight, obviously not Kia. Thank you very much for this opportunity. When Dr., as Susan mentioned, when Dr. Montessori graduated from middle school, one of the reasons why she started this program is because she was a woman and she couldn't get any other job. But she created an educational philosophy, quite frankly, that pioneered almost all of the trendiest buzzwords that you hear in education today: the whole child, social-emotional learning, project-based learning, and personalized learning. Montessori was the original project-based and personalized learning with no iPads required in our classrooms, a budget savings we would happily like to see. Montessori Elementary Education has one teacher leading multi-age classrooms, lower L from first through third grade, upper L, fourth and fifth grade combined. And the role of the teacher is really to observe the students, to assess their needs and what they're ready for, then provide lessons to individuals and to groups of students together based on their readiness for that topic, and then to help the children self-assess how they did with that particular topic, and if they are ready, how much learning there actually was that occurred, so that they can move on to the next set of lessons. There's often a perception that there's no structure in Montessori, or that children have total freedom, but nothing could be further from the truth. It's probably one of the most structured programs that there can be. Montessori has been valued in Arlington for fifty years, and I ask that you provide the program the flexibility it needs as we move into our own building to continue to value this particular philosophy, which again, meets all of the goals, many of the goals that you speak about for all of the educational programs in Arlington today. Thank you.
Mr. Hui.
Hello, Board members. My name is Jonathan Hui, and I'm here to talk about inclusiveness within the Drew Montessori program, which my daughter Eliza Jesse is a part of. Katie and I used to think Montessori is only for rich people who can afford it for their children. However, when I see my daughter's class picture, I see a diverse ethnic group, two-thirds of her classroom are made up of students of lower-income families. Not only is she being exposed to diversity in a cultural sense, she's also being exposed to diversity in a socioeconomic sense as well. In addition, the multi-age setting allows Eliza to learn from her peers and learn how to be a role model. She knows how to listen, how to lead. This is a form of inclusiveness that manifests itself on a daily basis for Eliza as she faces the world. With that in mind, I worry less about Eliza being bullied at school or bullying others, which is a concern I believe all parents and all educators face on a daily basis. Recently, my work has moved to Fairfax County. The drive is much longer for me, but we want to stay put in Arlington, as Arlington County is the only county in Virginia that offers a public Montessori program. However, if the Montessori program is diminished in any way, then it makes less sense for my family to be in Arlington. There are two rules I live by: happiness in life is living close to work, but more importantly, happy wife, happy life. And Katie loves Drew's Montessori program. If Arlington wants to increase its revenue, it needs to have attracting points for people wanting to move into this county. What better point to highlight than the public Montessori program? If not anything, we should add resources to this unique program, not take resources away. If you want to attract Amazon HQ too, this program should be front and center for potential workers who has families. Board members, I know you all are stuck between a rock and a hard place, but please don't cut the assistance. This is not a sunk cost. Please choose to invest in Arlington County's future, and more importantly, invest in our children's future. Thank you.
Before Ms. Selig, the next four speakers are Gaston Finger, and Marie Douglas, Caroline Coleman, and Kelly George.
Good evening. My name is Heather Selig, and I'm a mom to eight-year-old twins. Our homeschool is Jamestown, and yet, my kids spend fifty-seven minutes on the bus each direction to attend the Montessori program at Drew. We are the furthest family that goes to Drew, and as a federal employee, I understand that the board, and the county, and the budget, and it's all tight. I get it. I pay taxes, I see it. But there's other ways to compose and compress our budget without cutting a program that is so meaningful and so impactful to so many students. For example, I am happy to give my APS-issued iPad back, because I have two of them, and I usually want to run them over with my car, but yet, I'll be on the hook for those. And I realize that everybody here is asking for money. I totally understand that, because I'm gonna do the same thing in the next minute. I'm going to ask for money back to our program. But as part of the Montessori model, I want everybody to understand the classroom dynamics and the multi-level age groups. My eight-year-old twins, my daughter reads on an eighth-grade level, and I truly believe that's because of Montessori. She broke the PALS test. There is no more way she can go on PALS. My son just scored a one-thirty on the ENnet, and this is because of Montessori. They have no idea that they're not supposed to be working at this level. They don't know that kids in their class are working at lower levels, they're all intermixed. There's push-in models for special ed, there's push-in models for gifted, there's push-in models for everything. We, as Montessori, are doing small groups, and we do it well. That's the model that APS is trying to push, and we're doing it. We're making it happen. And I think by cutting the budget with the assistance, I think we're decimating the classroom, and my kids won't have that opportunity, and I'll have to put my kids in Jamestown. And I would rather my kids spend fifty-seven minutes on the bus going to Drew for a program that's effective.
Hello. I am Gaston Finger, and we are all eighth-grade members of the Swanson Middle School chorus. When I started chorus in sixth grade, I was a tiny soprano, who knew nothing about music. Now, I'm a bass, I read music, and I've been selected for county, district, state, and all southern honor choirs. Chorus has given me so much more self-confidence, a community to be an active part of, and it has taught me to strive for greatness. In just three years, our chorus has grown exponentially, and we have yet to receive a score below Superior at any competition. I can't imagine realizing these achievements without proper funding and without our amazing director, Dr. Clontz. These cuts will not only affect chorus, but band, orchestra, drama, and visual arts too. The arts are not dispensable. They're equally as important to one's education as core classes. It has been proven that students who participate in the arts are four times more likely to be recognized for academic achievement. We have a word for something which performs a task without any creativity: that is a robot.
So, us four are in a school a cappella club called the Crescent Dudes, and we just wanna perform a little piece for you guys to show you how much Dr. Clontz has helped us.
Yeah, we're turning the timer off for this.
Do you wanna do the whole song?
Yeah.
Swing down chariot, stop and let me ride, oh. Swing down chariot, stop and let me ride, oh. Rock me, Lord, rock me, Lord. Come and easy, I got a home, I got a home on the other side, oh. Swing down chariot, stop and let me ride, oh. Swing down chariot, stop and let me ride, oh. Rock me, Lord, rock me, Lord. Come and easy, I got a home, I got a home on the other side.
When Azir went out in the middle of the field, he saw an angel working on a chariot wheel. He wasn't particular about the chariot wheel. Just wanted to see how a chariot feels.
Well, Azir went down and he got on board. The chariot went bumpin' on down that old road. He wasn't particular about the bumpin' on the road. He just wanted to lay down his heavy load.
Swing down chariot, stop and let me ride, oh. Swing down chariot, stop and let me ride, oh. Rock me, Lord, rock me, Lord. Come and easy, I got a home, I got a home on the other side.
Well, Azir went out in the middle of the field, and then he started working on a chariot wheel. He wasn't so particular about working on that wheel. He just wanted to see how the chariot feels.
Saw the sinner working on the...
We're missing a missing...
He'd be there as a secure ride that wheel. The chariot will swing it down the old road. The chariot's a place to lay your heavy load.
Swing down chariot, stop and let me ride, oh. Swing down chariot, stop and let me ride, oh. Rock me, Lord, rock me, Lord. Come and easy, I got a home, I got a home on the other side, oh. Swing down chariot, stop and let me ride, oh. Swing down chariot, stop and let me ride, oh. Rock me, Lord, rock me, Lord. Come and easy, I got a home on the other side. Swing down chariot and let me ride. Swing down chariot and let me ride. Swing down chariot and let me ride. I got a home, I got a home, I got a home on the other side.
I don't know who's gonna speak next, but...
Our next speaker is Anne Marie Douglas.
Thank you very much. I do want to mention that if you get on our website and find our school board meeting, you can download a high-quality video of anyone's comments, including, you guys can download that tomorrow to share around. So, back to our public hearing.
What a hard act to follow. Hello, my name is Anne Marie Douglas. I'm a parent here in APS, and I'm a teacher by trade. I currently serve on the Science Advisory Committee and on SHAD, the School Health Advisory Board. I would like to talk to you tonight about how to save a load of money. Like March weather, iPads came in like a lion, and we'd like to see them fade out like a lamb. All we ask, all we asked for was a county-wide outdoor classroom coordinator, that was one of the Science Advisory Committee's recommendations. We have just one for the entire county. We have technology coordinators at every school. The budget does not reflect the needs of APS students or the views of its taxpayers. So let's save money in two ways, right away, and then long-term, over time, by bypassing all the remedial therapies and instructions that these devices contribute to. We cannot ignore the data on device usage, eyesight, attention span, I don't have much time here, so let's keep up with the data. And let's also keep up with the data about how we can heal and grow in complex environments like outdoor classrooms. There are simple and free techniques, such as looking up at the clouds and the trees in the skies, that we can implement that will help our anxious students, and I have a load of, two minutes. This here is a picture of enriched neuron, and this is an impoverished neuron. When our children are on their devices, it might look brilliant, but it's overtaxing their visual cortex while not igniting any more of their brain, not audio, taste, visual. We are moving our children onto sensory deprivation devices, and they need to be here in the real world. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Coleman.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Caroline Coleman, a ninth grader at Yorktown High School, and I'm here to speak in favor of funding for the arts. Implementation of arts education is an important part of a well-rounded education and an integral part of the lives of many APS students. I participated in chorus for three years at Swanson, and now do theater at Yorktown. These programs have taught me important lessons in responsibility and how to work as part of an ensemble. Arlington's music and theater programs are renowned, and it would truly be a shame to see their quality diminished. Additionally, there are many students who intend to build careers around the arts, and they should be able to access opportunities to develop their skills and experiences in their school's extracurriculars and electives. With the school system as competitive as Arlington's, many students are aiming for top colleges, which specifically look for dedication to these extracurriculars. Students in Arlington need access to arts education in their schools. Thank you.
All right, before our next speaker, well, Kelly George, is Kelly George here? Nope. All right, then the next five speakers are Greg Myers, Ulduz Aparaova, Catherine Blass, Soraya Ali, and Sarah Steffen.
And just a note, the speaker nineteen is not in attendance.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm here tonight to support the following three students, who are high school students from Wakefield, where I work. I commend them for their courage to be here tonight, to share with you their personal and powerful stories. Their stories speak for themselves, but I would add that I came to this county about a year and a half ago with ten years' experience as a school psychologist in a neighboring quality school district, because I saw that this school board was actively investing in school psychological services and mental health supports. That's why I came. I was excited to work in a county that would make a commitment to those growth positions, to those additional positions. Please honor that commitment. Thank you.
My name is Catherine Blass, and I am a senior at Wakefield High School. I'm here to talk about the effect of having school psychologists in Arlington public schools. Having depression was one of the worst things I experienced in my life. I denied it, and my parents were afraid of taking me to a therapist, because they didn't want to put depression in my record. Junior year turned out to be one of the worst years of high school. My grades started to drop down. I didn't do my homework due to lack of motivation and feeling stressed out. I put on a mask to show I'm okay when I'm really not, and the only people who knew I was suffering were my family and some close friends. Finally, my parents agreed to take me to a therapist, but as a few weeks passed, my depression got worse to the point where I tried to kill myself. I felt so empty, and I couldn't understand why I was still alive. But thankfully, after a few months, I began to see my depression improving from therapy. I continued to go to therapy, and it really helped. But I also had some assistance from Dr. Holtz at Wakefield, who was one of the school psychologists. She, despite not being my official psychologist, has been there to calm me down emotionally due to my social anxiety disorder, and gave me a comforting and relieving experience. She played an important part with helping me dealing with my depression in school, but that was only in high school. In eighth grade, I was sexually harassed by another student. This lasted for three months. If there was more awareness about mental health or support in middle school, I wouldn't have felt like it was my fault or feel guilty the way I did until, like, junior year. Now I know there must have been a school psychologist at my middle school. But as soon as you know about this, having more school psychologists would mean there's more help. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Soraya Ali, and I am a senior at Wakefield High School, here to talk about the importance of school psychologists. I am also part of a club called Our Minds Matter, sponsored by Mr. Myers, one of our school psychologists. Attending made me realize how important having one is and how little people really know about the existence of such help, or if they did know, they were rarely available, because only one psychologist shouldered the burdens of the whole school body. I, myself, have suffered through depression beginning my freshman year, and most of my life with anxiety. It got so bad to the point where almost every day I would contemplate upon taking my life, go to bed crying as a routine, and look out windows and balconies to wonder if I would survive a fall. I felt like I was a failure, a horrible daughter, sister, student, and friend. There was no point in me being alive when all I did was bring disappointment to others. I felt like worthless human scum and who had no benefit to being alive. Or the anxiety I felt was like being pointed at with spheres in all directions. Or the anxiety I felt was like being pointed at with spheres in all directions. The real problem was, nobody knew. I was good at masking my emotions to the point where I forgot how to express them anymore. I had to go through all of this alone. If only I knew there was a school psychologist, which I only found out junior year from my friend who had decided to get help before me. If there were more school psychologists, they could be more available for this kind of help. I would not have given my loved ones such a hard time. I would not have contemplated suicide daily. I also would not have made any attempts. I don't want any other student to have to go through such a struggle again. Not everyone is capable of rejecting the thought that suicide provides escape. In some moments, it might seem like a blissful paradise compared to this life, which is not true. But some only regret once it's too late to turn back. Not everyone can handle such a monster alone and it is scary to be alone. Thank you.
Before Ms. Steffen starts, I'll quickly call up the next four speakers. They're Leslie Stockton, Rose Cheng Yong, Edwin Yong, and Danielle Warchowski.
Hi, I'm Sarah Steffen and I'm a senior at Wakefield. And I'm taking my perspective from someone who's recently joined the APS community just this past year. And coming in, it's very nice, however, specifically getting a text from one of my friends at about eight o'clock at night saying goodbye definitely was a scare. And they were a freshman coming in and as I'm a senior, I have friends, they come to me, they talk to me. And I was glad to be able to help this person to save them from what they were about to do. However, I realized I was their last resort. They didn't feel they had something to go to. And being this freshman, being somebody who had also just come into the high school, this didn't start freshman year, this definitely started sooner either elementary or middle school. And it was something that they didn't have help for. And while they did have the help provided in high school, it's something that should be definitely attacked earlier as to prevent something from already getting that far. And I have friends who have come to me and I've said I would love to help and I help them as much as I can, but I am not a professional. I'm not somebody who can give specific advice involving their actual mental health. So my force, my last response after they, I give them my advice is to go talk to a professional. And when I get back from them, that they do not have the time, as in the professional they go to does not have time in their schedule because they are already working with other students and doing their own job. It's sad to look at the fact that I'm the last resort, that the students that they come to talk to are the last resort, who are already struggling themselves. And so I would hope to kind of get more help from my friends and for the people that I know will be coming into the schools so they can have a chance to live their lives. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Good evening, school board. Dr. Murphy, my name is Leslie Stockton. I am the Arlington Education Association Vice President and I am also a twenty-year veteran from the Arlington Public Schools. I work at Kenmore Middle School as both a part-time testing coordinator and a part-time minority achievement coordinator. As you can see, several of the members of our organization have joined us tonight because they want to make sure that you have the faces of the people whose lives will be impacted through the budget cuts, particularly in areas of A scale, G scale, and even some T scale. But I think more importantly, and I've really been moved by a lot of the speakers before me, I would ask, if you are a teacher or an educator in this system, please stand up. If you are a student in this system, stand up. If you are a parent of a child in this system, stand up. If you are an Arlington citizen who cares about the education of all of our children, the mental health support, the emotional support, the academic support, if you have anything to do with any part of caring about Arlington Public Schools and making it and keeping it one of the best premier public school systems, please make sure that you stand up. I'm asking everyone in this room who cares about that to stand up. It is critical for the board, for the superintendent, for the other assistant superintendents, for the principals, for the supervisors, please recognize there are literally hundreds of people in this room who care about this school system. The budget that is proposed before us does not care about these people. Let me repeat that again. The budget that is being proposed does not care about these people. It is people that drive the education of Arlington. And I hope that the school board, I hope that those in power understand it is the people who will judge us on our success or failure. Thank you.
Ms. Yong?
Thank you very much. My name's actually Edwin Yong and I want to apologize because I turn in the papers incorrectly because my wife always has the last word over me, always. And I'm sorry, and my daughter, Ashley Young, she's a senior at Yorktown and she asked me to read this speech for all of you this evening. So this is from my daughter's perspective. Music has been a part of my life since I came, since I can remember. I have been involved in the APS Arts Program since kindergarten and it has been essential into shaping me into who I am today. When I heard that there were plans to cut back on funding for the arts, I was devastated because this is a very personal issue to me, which is evident as both my parents are here before you today on behalf of me, as well as the arts program as a whole. As someone who has been in school as well as honors and district choirs for many years, I know how music can bring people together and how it makes people feel like they can be themselves. I see it every day in my choir. The current art specialist, Ms. Kelly Breedlove, is someone who taught me personally at ATS for all six years I was a student there. Along with the fact she is extremely knowledgeable about music and keeps everything in APS related to the arts smoothly, she has been also very supportive of me since my time as a student, with her as a student. When I was volunteering as an usher at the juniors honors band auditions back in November, she came up to me and said she was proud of the outgoing person that I had become. Along with Ms. Breedlove, I would like to recognize Roger Oliver, Teresa Severin, Emily McTavish, and Kira Clontz for all being amazing directors in the schools I have attended. We cannot let the APS Arts Program be cut back on. There are so many people who depend on it and many more that will come in the future. In order to grow and prosper, the arts program needs to be kept at least in all positions that currently stand. Thank you, Ashley Young, Senior, Yorktown High School.
Hi, let's just pretend that I'm Edwin Yong instead of Rose. I raised a couple of really talented children, but I want to talk to you about arts and music benefiting, you know, the other spectrum. You know, take me, for example, I was diagnosed with retardation when I was little, so I could not speak until I was a teenager. You know, my parents, they used art and music to help me to recognize patterns, you know, one letter at a time, one song at a time, one, you know. So now today, you know, I am independent. Obviously, I have children. I, you know, become a CPA and I received my MBA and, you know, totally independent. You know, I have a nephew who was in a car accident, almost fatal car accident. They said there's no chance of him recovering because his short-term memory was gone. You know, through art and music, now he's, you know, getting some of his memory back. You know, I have a nephew who has autism. You know, they're using arts and music as therapy for him. And then my nephew who has speech impediment problem, you know, through art and music, you could help people of any, you know, spectrum, not just my, you know, talented children, you know, anybody at any stage of the, you know, wherever you are, you could benefit from it. So that's why I'm here to support not cutting any art and music program or actually I'm here to support not cutting any human resource, period. Because I want to ask you to just think, if you have a problem financially at home, would you cut, would you put grandma to sleep? Would you put your dog to sleep? You would not, you're going to say that, hey, maybe junior at eight years old might not need a computer. Maybe I could move to a three-bedroom house instead of four-bedroom house. But people...
Thank you.
...are going to be, what's going to keep our society having it so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Before Ms. Warchowski speaks, the last three speakers are Jennifer Smith, Keith Shannon, and Nathan Stamps.
Hi, I'm Danielle Warchowski and I have a freshman at Yorktown High School who would have loved to have been here tonight, but he actually has a band concert, a phenomenal band concert because Yorktown has an amazing band program. And I just want to talk, you know, a little bit about the support of the arts and developing the whole child because this is, you know, one of your mandates here. And I will just speak as a parent as to what the band program has been like for my child for seventh and through middle school up until high school. It has given him, number one, a purpose and I think that kids that are involved in the choir and theater and the arts and things like that, it gives them a purpose. And we all know how important having a purpose is and making school kind of a place that they want to be because they want to be a part of this group and things like that. And I will say that in high school, it's multi, you know, multi-grades kind of coming together. It's kind of the Montessori idea. And I can tell you, my son has these great seniors who have taken this leadership role and I hope that my son will kind of develop that. But these leaders help my son, I mean, you know, when he doesn't know kind of academics, we're not even talking about music. So what goes on in these music groups is far beyond music. It really is developing the leadership skills, the resiliency skills. There's a whole social aspect that goes on and we know what's going on, you know, with our high school students, with the jeweling and things like that. We need to give kids ways to be productive and find good places to socialize. And so I really hope that you guys will continue to support the arts.
Hi there, I'm Jennifer Smith and I've lived in the county for over a decade. And I have to say, this is my first time actually speaking at a school board meeting. I've been to lots of board meetings, but I haven't come to one to speak, so, thank you. So I'm here to ask you to maintain not-cut funds for our arts education programs, especially the art specialist position in the central office, the professional development funding and the lead teacher stipends. All these cuts would eat away at our really well-developed programs. Now, I'm not a singer. Let me tell you, I am not a singer. When I sing at church, people step away. I mean, you know, it's bad. My husband is not a singer. Only in the last few years have I actually kind of learned, okay, soprano is this and alto is this. And I don't know these things. This is not my area. My daughter Clara Smith is a seventh grader at Swanson and she first really experienced advanced chorus when she went to the honors chorus program. She tried out, it was her first time doing that, anything like that. She made it, she had a wonderful experience. It really sparked her growing interest in the arts, in music and singing specifically. She also plays guitar, she also swims. She is, and it's because of the arts and music, the whole child, which is what APS is all about. So at that honors chorus in sixth grade a year ago, I was really impressed too with the widely diverse group of students who participated in that program, coming from all over the county. My mother-in-law is from Lynchburg, Virginia. She'll be sure to tell you if she meets you, she is also a former teacher. And trust me, you won't forget that if you meet her. She commented she'd never heard anything like this. So the point is...
Thank you.
I hope Arlington keeps it. I hope we support it and I hope we support the funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Keith Shannon and I have a child with disabilities who is currently in pre-K. This is his third year in APS and he's received a variety of services at school. And we've been very pleased with these services at both the early childhood and preschool levels. However, we're concerned that as he progresses to higher grades, his APS teachers will not have the adequate help to, in the form of training, assistants and other trained resource personnel. This is especially problematic as the superintendent's FY 2019 proposed budget does not appear to fully reflect the school board's priority to support inclusionary and integrated learning environments. As I've been advised by my son's teachers and have observed through school visits, my son along with many other students require significant guidance and attention. As the teacher-to-student ratio increases, it is even more important that more support is provided to address the needs of these students and that the single-classroom teacher does not take on this burden alone. I'm afraid there is nothing in the budget that suggests APS is preparing to undergo a paradigm shift in the way it educates students with significant or complex support needs. Perhaps most critically, elements of the proposed budget may actually impede progress in this priority area. In light of APS's priorities to reduce achievement gaps, to consider the whole child's needs, to enhance responsive education and ensure equitable access and reduce segregation, I ask the school board to adjust the budget to accommodate these goals. Thank you.
And our final speaker on the public hearing is Mr. Stamps.
I'll try to be brief, but I also have concern regarding the increased fees for the pool facilities. I don't mean to continue on with the comments, or I don't mean to re-articulate the comments the earlier gentleman had made, but I think it's telling that while community swimmer's fees have increased about thirty-nine percent since the transfer with the departments, or Department of Parks and Rec, the fact that their transfer amount from the county has not changed in those nine years. And I think that obviously that needs to be addressed if the fact that they had a base amount of funds that were supposed to be subject to changes and increases depending on the changes of revenue and expenses that the aquatics program was experiencing and it hasn't happened, that they probably, A, aren't necessarily addressing it at all or they aren't addressing in the way that should be. And I feel that you as the board, with your proposed budget of increasing the fees again, is also a Band-Aid to a probably bigger problem with the Department of Parks and Rec.
All right. Thank you all so much. Well, I'll give you a big yay for all of you for coming out this evening. We very much appreciate hearing your comments. We have, of course, been reading your emails as well. And I do want to assure you that the school board has been deeply engaged and working very hard to do the best that we can with this budget. I want to remind you where we are in the process so that you know what we're doing tonight and then how this is going to play out going forward. We are currently looking at the superintendent's proposed budget that came out last month. We will propose our budget on April 5th. So that's the point, well, we're in that stage of listening, engaging, reading emails, working with each other, trying to do our best to build the best possible budget we can. And so what that means is at this moment, this evening, board members will not be ready to make comments or talk about the priorities or what we did with the budget because it simply is not done yet. We will all be making extensive comments, no doubt, when we present our proposed budget and that will be on April 5th. So I do want to remind you, since the superintendent proposed his budget, we have had four work sessions. They were extremely productive. We've been looking at a lot of details that are in that budget. We have one more work session on April 5th, the Tuesday after spring break. And then again, that Thursday becomes the evening that we will be presenting our budget here at our board meeting. Friday, the 6th, we will join with the county board at a joint work session and talk to them about our budget. I think you all know and many of you have mentioned in your comments that as a growing school system with a lot of pressures, where our needs continue to grow but our county revenues don't grow quite as fast as our needs, we find ourselves in a difficult situation where we have to make tough choices. We do, you know, I can assure you as chair that this whole board cares about every one of these issues that were raised this evening. We've been talking about them. We want to do our best and we'll continue to work hard at that. But again, we, you know, we may at the end of the day have to make some difficult choices. We very much value the whole child, very much value our teachers and... We very much value the whole child, very much value our teachers, and thank you all so much for coming out tonight. And again, as Mr. Fohl pointed out from the beginning, I think it's very important to recognize that we never once thought about not including step increases for our teachers and staff in this budget. And that's actually, of course, what makes it hard to fit everything else in. So we really, really do appreciate everyone coming out. The next step, this concludes the public hearing on the budget. Our next item is citizen comment on non-agenda items. Ms. Elliott, how many speakers do we have?
We have seven speakers.
Seven. It would be great if folks chose to stay and listen to those speakers because then we will take a break after that to kind of allow the room to be cleared. So we'll go on to-
Just didn't hear that one.
Why don't we take a break? Five-minute break, and then we will go on to non-agenda speakers. We adapt. We adapt. Or three minutes. It's- Okay. Thanks to all of you who chose to stick with us. We are going to now move to our citizen comment on non-agenda items. And I do just want to point out, I know that when we have committee chairs come to speak, we don't put a timer on them. And I know our first speaker this evening is going to be the chair of our facilities advisory council. So we will start with that speaker and go forward from there. Ms. Elliott, if you'd like to call the speakers.
All right. First speaker is Stacy Snyder.
Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Murphy. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Stacy Snyder. I'm the chair of the advisory council on school facilities and capital programs, or the FAC. And this is the first of three public comments I will be making tonight, and each one I will be speaking on behalf of the whole facilities advisory committee. Since early last fall, members of the FAC have been working closely with APS staff to develop the future facilities needs report, which I am presenting to you this evening. There's a hard copy there. Staff helped us to provide and validate data and worked with us closely to review our analysis. This report is an attempt to provide a framework for you, the county board, and the citizens of Arlington to understand the extent of the impact of our student population growth. We sought to understand what our facility needs might look like in our school system that is growing at an unprecedented pace and to highlight the need to develop a comprehensive and strategic long-range plan for land use and capital projects across the county. The potential future needs identified in this report are intended to inform capital improvement plan decisions, encourage APS staff, county staff, and all Arlington residents to engage in the important discussion of finding potential solutions, urge that every decision is made transparently in the context of understanding impacts to our overall growing seat need and how it fits into our overall limited budget. Establish and strengthen an integrated partnership between APS and Arlington County regarding long-range planning. We believe that this could be a very useful tool and valuable tool as facilities' decisions are made both in the short term and long term. I will now read you the cover letter of the report. Arlington County is in the midst of a period of unprecedented population growth. While this growth could be seen as a reflection of an excellent and appealing school division, the direct impact need to be recognized and planned for. Arlington Public Schools does not currently have enough permanent seats for our students. Over the next five years, APS will open two elementary schools, a middle school, and is planning to add 1,300 high school seats. Even with those major capital projects, we will still suffer from considerable seat deficits by 2022, and the latest enrollment projections show that by school year 2026-27, we will surpass 32,000 students, and if student growth continued, we would be on track to grow to 35,000 students within 15 years. Our challenge is both short term and long term. Every decision we make on capital projects and buildings today must examine both the short-term needs and the long-term implications. Arlington County's available space is limited, and we must serve our growing population's needs for schools and multiple other uses. We must therefore ensure that we are maximizing the use of our sites and not limiting our ability to grow programs and schools in the future. In short, the capacity issues now facing APS are not going away. Our challenge is exacerbated by the fact that our available space, budget, and bonding capacity are limited. As such, APS cannot address this challenge without active engagement from the county board. It is time to implement a strategic collaborative effort between Arlington School Board and the county board to develop a comprehensive and long-range plan for land use and capital projects across the county. Every decision we make in the near term and the long term regarding land use and capital projects should be considered through the lens of how it impacts all of Arlington. We simply do not have the latitude and our available space or bonding capacity to operate in any other way. In an attempt to provide a framework to the school board, county board, and citizens to understand the extent of the impact of our student population growth, the advisory council on school facilities and capital programs has developed the attached report which illustrates the potential new school needs that could result from this growth. We implore both boards to use this report to jumpstart a process that will develop an integrated, long-range plan for all of Arlington. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Owings.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Owings. I'm the parent of two current and one future Patrick Henry students, and I'm done. That's the extent of my contribution to the overcrowding problem. I am here to ask all of you to make a commitment at this juncture to keep Henry together, to keep each and every planning unit that comprises the Henry community together when that school moves to Fleet. And the elementary school planning initiative that was spoken to earlier really tables that question until later, until the fall. But I would like to ask that you get out in front of this issue and that you not wait for the results of walk zone studies and still forthcoming demographic information that may be intrinsically at least unreliable before you keep, make the decision to keep all of Henry together at Fleet. Doing so would adhere to the core values that APS espouses publicly. First, integrity and accountability. When deciding to build Fleet instead of to build out Patrick Henry and during the South Arlington Working Group, and really as recently as in the last months, APS has said that what Fleet is, is a school for Henry. I take that to be nothing less than a commitment, pure and simple. And I ask that each of you honor that commitment and move now, not right here, but sort of early in this planning process, to say that the seats at Fleet go first to children who are currently Henry children. I recognize certainly that things change even since Fleet was first imagined and that the student body has grown sort of more than was expected, but if, you know, if I could, if I would-
I'm sorry. Thank you. It's fair to all speakers that we stick to the times.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Matt Di Farante.
Thanks very much, members of the board. I just, I was at home listening as the budget committee chair. I was at home listening to all those comments, and I know they were powerful for all of you. I'm here on a slightly different topic tonight, and that's about the FAC's proposal and the report that they're putting together for the capital improvement plan. We've looked at it as a BAC, and we think it raises important points about the planning that we need to do going forward. And if you look at the scale and the scope of the enrollment increases, we have to think differently. And you all have expressed that in different ways, but it's, I think it's just critical that we see that we're going to need additional seats, elementary, middle, and high school, even beyond what's in the capital improvement plan from last time. So we've read it as a group. I sent it around. Individually, folks have replied directly to me on the BAC, and as a group, we're coordinating. We support the recommendations that Stacy Snyder and the entire FAC will be talking about regarding thinking differently with respect to providing an education over the next 10, 15 years for all the students that are going to be coming to Arlington and that continue to come to Arlington every year. Thanks very much.
Our next speaker is Danielle Warchowski.
It's me again. So I just want to say that my, I'm not only a parent at APS, but I've been a substitute teacher, and I've gone into a lot of classrooms. I've been in the middle school, every single middle school, every single high school, community centers and things like that. And first of all, I will say the teachers are phenomenal in APS. The thing that has really struck me as a parent that I was totally oblivious to, which is the amount of cellphone use by the students in APS, and that it's ver, it's, it's okay by even the teachers to let that happen. When a kid forgets an iPad, hasn't charged their iPad, oh, just use your cellphone. They use their tests to use cellphones? You know, if we're going to have this one-on-one, why are we letting them use cellphones instead of iPads and their computers? That I just do not understand. And if you had seen how many times that, you know, you'll say, please turn off your cellphone. Please put it away. They don't. You know, it's almost like this battle. I mean, if you have kids at home, you know how difficult it is. That is happening. And when we're talking about achievement gap, I can tell you, I have students who'll have an hour and a half block where they have maybe a half an hour's worth of work. They won't turn it in. They're working because they've got nothing, literally nothing done because they've been on their cellphone. And I would really appreciate if you guys, if you wanted to do a study, I talked with the partnership, so that they can actually monitor how much noneducational use is coming up through just the use of cellphones, which cannot be monitored. You know, the APS Wi-Fi does not filter out cellphones.
The next speaker is Steve Leitner.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Murphy. My name is Stephen Leitner, and I'm here to talk about Arlington Science Focus and the boundary revision process. As many of you know, I'm a passionate advocate for the school. The school is facing many challenges, including building capacity limitations, outdoor space, parking, and walk zones. I hope to engage you on these topics in the near future, but the item I am here to talk to you about tonight is the most important, and that is the core principle that Arlington Science Focus should remain a neighborhood school. The neighborhood school, the neighborhood surrounding the school supports keeping the school as a neighborhood school and not an option program. The road infrastructure surrounding the school is inadequate to support the demands of an option program. But perhaps the most convincing argument of all is the objectives, the objective mathematics that based on the September 2017 enrollment data, there are approximately 1,500 K through five students between Quincy Street here at the Education Center and Roslyn. five students between Quincy Street here at the Education Center and Roslyn. The Arlington Science Focus building and the Key Building combined have a capacity of 1,206 seats. That is not enough to handle that 1,500 students. Additionally, there are 2,000 new county-approved housing units being built now in Ballston and another 2,000 in Roslyn. This is, does not account for other major developments like the Red Top in Clarendon or the YMCA in Virginia Square. Many of these planned housing units are three-bedroomed townhouses or calves, all which tend to generate more students. The ground truth is that we actually need two neighborhood schools in this area, not just one, and likely more capacity on top of that. And so in closing, I have one simple request. It doesn't cost anything. As you develop your two proposals of where to put neighborhood and option schools, please leave Arlington Science Focus as a neighborhood school in both scenarios. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Next speaker is Luann Oliver.
Good evening, School Board members and superintendents and everyone who's here. It's great to have this opportunity to speak, and I just want to start by saying I do recognize how much everyone here and people making decisions are invested in our children, and we appreciate that. I want to make some comments about things that are happening on devices. We refer to inappropriate content, so I want to inform listeners and to what specifically the inappropriate content is. I think when we call it inappropriate content, we're really minimizing what it actually is, and I am really not looking forward to sharing this information. It really is quite scary. And while we have a new filtering system, the reality is that children will find a way around any filter system, and these filters can block inadvertent exposure, but not when children are intentionally seeking it out. So how many kids view pornography or have seen pornography? This is from 2008, nine years ago. 93% of boys and 62% of girls have been exposed by 19. 35% of boys have viewed 30 minutes or longer. 14% of girls have done the same time, nine years ago, when we didn't have devices one-to-one in our schools. So how many could potentially be addicted? They say 5% to 6%. I'm sure it's higher. This, again, this was 2008. That would, if we stick with 6%, that's 732 kids in middle school and high school that likely have a pornography addiction. So what are they seeing specifically? The highest, this is in order of prevalence, group sex. 83% of boys and 50% of girls have viewed group sex. Same-sex intercourse-
Could I interrupt you for just a second? Do you want to take the children out? Okay. Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay.
Okay. All right. My apologies.
I interrupted you at the end. I was just, did she finish? Okay. Did you, did you finish? I interrupted you. I'm, my fault.
Her time's up.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and my sincere apologies. So other things I won't list specifically. I don't know how much time I have. Okay. Well, so then we look at this being the first exposure to, that youth have to these types of things and the impact. We're in the midst of the Me Too movement, and can this get better if this is the type of exposure that we're having? So I-
Thank you.
Thank you for consideration.
Thank you. Yeah.
Our last speaker is Jim Harris.
I'm Jim Harris. I'm a close-by neighbor of Abingdon School, and we're, I and my neighbors are quite concerned about, about what's occurring here in Arlington in the future. We are increasingly concerned about the present as a predictor of the pa, of the, of the future. County government and APS have embraced development for the sake of development, growth for the sake of growth for many years. 60,000 more residents in 20 years without Amazon. Where is the comprehensive planning? Second, I and others are appalled by the extravagant spending by Arlington government and APS. For example, the projected $35.9 million Taj Mahal renovation of 2100 Clarendon Boulevard. Discussion deferred until the April 21st county board meeting. Also, the $4 million makeover of Yorktown High School to include what appear to be every conceivable amenity. It appears that Abingdon School will be at capacity in another year. What then? More relocatables in two years and more new classrooms in three years? When will it end? I ask you and ask your colleagues at the county board to consider a moratorium on growth for the sake of growth, development for the sake of development, infill for the sake of infill, until other economic development paradigms, 21st century economic development paradigms can be thoroughly evaluated and thoroughly discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. We're done.
Thanks, everyone, for coming out. We are going to move on to our monitoring items, and because of our schedule change, we did the first monitoring item earlier. That was the superintendent's action plan update, so we will go to our science update. Dr. Murphy.
Yes, and while Dr. Natris and Dr. Dot Lee make their way to the podium, I just want to make a special thank you. While this evening is the science update, I want to recognize Dr. Lee and his efforts for the recent Regional Science Fair that was postponed due to some inclement weather, but as you'll hear a little bit tonight about the success that he was able to bring as a result of the postponement and also the number of students that we recognize. So while many of us were sort of at home while that windstorm was going on, Dot was running around trying to get organized and trying to get up. Unfortunately, we were not able to restore the power to Wakefield High School on, over the weekend and then on Sunday for the culminating event, but we truly appreciate your efforts, and I know the students appreciate it as well.
And Dr. Murphy stole my intro, so I was going to do the same public thanks for Dot as well as his team for both the science fair prep over those couple of weeks, as well as, you'll hear about the outdoor lab some this evening. There was also some damage at the outdoor lab. They got that up and running again with the help of our facilities team to get our schools back up and running as quickly as we could. So while for some people it was a three-day weekend, for our science team, it was a really long weekend as they were trying to get all of those things in place. And also to thank Dr. Lee for all of his work and science leadership. You'll hear this evening about the science program. We'll look at some of the data, and we'll talk about some of the recommendations and the work that's taking place moving forward. So I will turn things over to him.
Good evening, Dr. Cannonan, members of the school board, Dr. Murphy, and members of the executive leadership team. Thank you for having me tonight to share with you our science program update. Before I start, though, I would like to give you an update on our Northern Virginia Regional Science Fair, which was slated to happen early last month, but as Dr. Murphy had mentioned, we had to cancel the event. This was the first time in 62 years that we had to do the cancellation. Arlington Public Schools have been sponsoring the Northern Virginia Regional Science Fair with Alexandria, City of Alexandria, City of Falls Church, and a lot of the private and parochial schools, and we had to cancel the, the fair. But fortunately, schools were still able to nominate their best projects to go to the Virginia State Regional Science Fair, and we also had a smaller version of competition for these nominees. And I'd like, I'm very excited to share with you that our grand prize winners are, is, are James Lucado and Skylar Burdowski, both at Washington &amp; Lee. And then I also would like to share with you a very nice event that we're planning, our open house on Monday, April 16th, at Washington &amp; Lee from 6:00 to 8:00. It's an opportunity for our students to showcase their projects and for parents, friends, and community members to enjoy these wonderful projects and appreciate our students' hard work and talents. Also, just a reminder that the Virginia State Science Fair this year will be in Roanoke, Virginia in April, and the International Science Fair, ISEF, will be in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania in May. So now for our science program update report, our science program's vision is to prepare students with the scientific knowledge and skills to become part of a productive global workforce of problem solvers and innovators. So it's important that we have our students become critical consumers of science, helping them to make informed decisions throughout their lives. There are four key areas of focus in our science program. The first one is safety. That's paramount to all, for all of our students and staff, and it goes beyond the classroom and the lab activities, but also includes field trips and other programs such as the outdoor lab and the planetarium. Our second area of focus is to build scientific concepts and skills. In addition to the core content, biology, chemistry, earth, science, and physics, developing scientific processing skills is extremely important and is key to our students' success. Whether they're attending college or pursuing a career in STEM or in the technical field, our students really have to acquire those scientific and critical thinking skills. Our third area of focus is project-based learning. Project-based learning allows us to move away from those traditional cookbook labs and allow our students to design their experiments with a lot of latitude in terms of identifying their experimental design and determining their own variables. This is really a big shift and a focus on student-centered learning. And our fourth and final area of focus is to, for problem solving and real-world applications and the value of making connections and making sci, science relevant to their lives. And we've had wonderful programs in place to make that happen. One of our programs that we're extremely proud of is the scientists in the classroom at the elementary level, where we have scientists assigned to almost every single elementary school, and this is a year-round commitment where scientists would come in on a weekly basis and work with our students, share their expertise, and help our students understand why science is important and why it's so relevant with their lives. We also focus a lot on independent research projects, starting at the elementary level, but really drill in at the secondary level. The science program also includes the outdoor lab and the planetarium. The outdoor lab continues to be extremely popular with our students and parents and teachers. It's a highlight for many. We hear it time and time again, how exciting and how enriching the program is for our students. More than 6,000 students participated in the outdoor lab program last year. This includes about roughly 2,000 students, fifth graders, who participated in the overnight program. For our planetarium, we also have programs in place at the K-12 level. All of our programs, our planetarium programs are aligned with the standards of learning, and we've really expanded the planetarium program. It's not like when we were little where it's focused only on earth and space science. Now, we've had programs that really expand into life science, physical science, so that it aligns at each of the grade levels for, for our students. All of our programs at the planetarium are extremely popular, and we've also hit full capacity over there as well. Our next slide addresses our APS Science SOL pass rates. When compared, this is a three-year comparison. When we compare over the last three years, our pass rate continues to be steady. And then the next slide addresses the, and of course, trends. And this is a comparison between Virginia and Arlington Public Schools. The overall pass rate for the state last year slightly dipped, whereas Arlington's pass rate showed an increase. In terms of supporting and encouraging our students to take advanced science classes, courses, particularly our AP and IB courses, last year we saw a significant increase in enrollment, about 14%. So more of our students are taking more challenging courses. We, our enrollment, our enrollment went up from 840 to 959 last year. We're also expanding our science course offerings for our students. For, during the summer, we're offering earth science and chemistry for new work for students who want that opportunity to take in a course that perhaps didn't fit in their schedule during the school year. We're also offering a blended course in earth science, which provides our students with more flexibility and more personalized support from their teachers. We're very excited about those offerings. This year, upcoming fall, we're providing or offering a foundations of environmental science course, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in the later slides, but this is also huge in terms of supporting our, our students. This year, we, we also have additional dual enrollment courses. We've added human anatomy and oceanography at Wakefield and are also expanding oceanography this coming fall at W&amp;L. Our increased enrollment for these two courses went from 26 to 101, and we also plan to move forward with additional dual enrollment courses for the upcoming year. So our recommendations and next steps, keep in mind that these recommendations align with our program evaluation and also is basically best practices. So our first recommendation is to revise and implement our science laboratory safety protocols and practices. This year, we have revised our APS chemical hygiene plan and safety guide. All of our secondary science teachers went through a seven-hour online course on lab and chemical safety, which focused on best practices, handling and storaging of chemicals, and updates on policies and procedures. And the importance of this is that it keeps safety practice in the forefront of their instruction. We've also continued to conduct science laboratory inspections at all of our secondary classrooms, science classrooms, which also includes chemical inventories and a very robust disposal plan with the support of our APS safety coordinator. One special project that we're working on this year is to create an emergency management plan booklet for the outdoor lab. We have one for our entire school division that addresses our schools, but the outdoor lab is a unique place, a wonderful place, but it has different outdoor elements such as weather and critters that we have to address, as well as we still need to make sure that all of the current policies and procedures for our students when they move from the, from when they get from the schools to the lab are also in place. Our next step, we're hoping or expecting to complete our emergency management plan booklet for the outdoor lab this summer, and we're also reviewing and establishing safety protocols for lab experiments to take a proactive approach to safety. Our second recommendation focuses on project-based learning. This year, we continue to implement our engineering is elementary curriculum at the elementary level. We've developed and purchased differentiated resources to support project-based learning. We've provided, also provided our secondary science teachers with professional development through our NOAA-BWAT grant that we received two years ago, and also we've provided many of our teachers with site-based support. Some of our science specialists have, Jen in particular, has supported our teachers with their project-based learning and provide that extra pair of hands in their classroom. Our next steps in this recommendation, we hope to, we plan to offer a third cohort of training for our science teachers with the NOAA-BWAT grant and also continue to develop- develop more project-based learning activities at the outdoor lab and at the planetarium. Our third recommendation has to do with supporting personalized learning with the use of interactive technology. This past year, we completed our purchase of resources for all of our secondary science classes. We provide our teachers, secondary teachers, with trainings on these resources during the summer, and we plan to continue to provide our secondary science teachers with training on sensors and probe wares, again, through the NOAA-BWAT grant, where it interfaces with a lot of the other materials. Our next steps would continue to implement our new resources. This is an ongoing process where we'd like to continue the integration and the implementation with Canvas. And then, the science standards of learning is slated to be revised through the Virginia Department of Education in 2019, so we're planning to align our curriculum documents with those new changes in 2019, which is coming up next year. And our final, fourth and final recommendation is to develop multiple pathways to graduation and college preparation, so that we're addressing the needs of all of our students. This includes providing different course options for our students to earn credits. I've talked a little bit earlier in this presentation about the Foundations of Environmental Science for this upcoming year. And this is huge because this provides a lot of our students who may need the additional support, whether it's foundational skills or language development, that additional help where it will build and provide them with that structure so that as they move into biology, chemistry, and physics, they have a, a better grounding. We also are planning to expand our dual enrollment course offerings, working with not only JMU but also with NOAA, Nova, and then also expand our summer school new work for credit and blended course offerings. Our plan for this summer, we expect to complete our Foundations of Environmental Science curriculum, and then also plan for additional dual enrollment courses to pilot for the upcoming year. And that is the report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Our clerk has stepped out. I don't know if we have speakers, but if we have speakers, we'll get to them in just a second. Why don't we go straight to questions, questions and comments from the board? Ms. Grady.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cannon. Dr. Lee, let me ask you about, can you just give me some examples of what our students might be experiencing in the classroom when it comes to project-based learning that they might be excited to come home and tell their parents about?
So, a big component in our elementary program is the, engineering is elementary, where it's a project-based learning component. And we provide these programs at the grades three, four, and five. One such program is at the fourth grade level, where students learn how to find solutions to an oil spill. And in those, that situation, the students learn not only about the water ecosystem, but also create and design their own solutions using a variety of different variables that they think of, and then they, and a lot of these solutions can be long-term, where students work in small groups or in whole groups to develop some ideas and then try to follow-up on those ideas. We have those kinds of activities at grades three, four, and five, with the idea that as they matriculate into secondary, that they have that foundation in project-based learning so that they could use the FOS kits and also move forward in independent research projects.
Thank you. That's an exciting example. I'm sure our kids really enjoy that. And I wanted to ask you about the students who are moving on and taking advanced classes once they get into upper levels. I wanted to know whether or not traditionally underrepresented groups in the sciences are taking advantage of these more intensified courses.
So, last year, we had a very large enrollment increase in our AP and IB courses, and we looked at the data to see which students are, are accounting for that increase. And while we still see that a, a large percentage of those students are, are white students, we're seeing more students, Hispanic and Black students, who are taking these courses. It's about 65 percent of the 900 and so students who are taking the AP classes are white students, and about the other 35 percent are non-white students, with 10 percent, about 11 percent Asian students. Our Hispanic students are, have really increased in their taking AP courses. About 14 percent of that number are Hispanic students.
Thank you for sharing that. And the last question I had, would have for you is, I know some of our students come from schools that are very science-focused. Are we seeing students who come from all of our elementary schools being quite as interested in science as maybe some students who come from schools that have a bigger concentration in science?
And I, I'm gathering that you're referring to students from those schools taking AP and IB courses, is that?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so we haven't necessarily done an analysis of students who perhaps come from Arlington science-focused in terms of how many AP or IB courses. But what's very exciting is the program at Hoffman-Boston that started about five years ago. Those students now, in the third and fourth grade, are about eighth and ninth grade right now. And so it's, we're extremely excited about looking at some of those analyses to see about, to see whether those have made an impact in terms of their science attitude, aptitude, and also their, their preparation in high school. And I think that the program, Hoffman-Boston STEM program has been extremely powerful and exciting, and it really lends itself for some longitudinal study over multiple years as we have more and more students moving from Hoffman-Boston into our high school programs.
Okay. Thank you so much. I just wanted to just say that while we have some schools that have exemplary focuses, focus on science, I do think it's important to encourage all our kids, no matter where they go in elementary school, to get excited about science. And that's why I am happy to hear some of the stories that you've been telling about project-based learning. So no matter where you, you are in elementary school, you can get excited about science. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Plus the scientists in the schools, which really is a great program at every, you said every elementary school?
Right now, we have 19 scientists out of the 23 elementary schools. We have 19, and some schools have two scientists.
So if anyone's watching and is a scientist, we need a few more volunteers.
And we have an amazing scientist at Drew, Dr. Horn, who's focused a lot on what you had mentioned, project-based learning, supporting our students in, at Drew, and the, the students and staff there just is ecstatic about having him there.
Great. Yep. Any questions? Mr. Goldstein?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Dot. Could you go back to slide seven, please? Yeah, that one. So I think we saw these end-of-course trends last fall, and I think the question asked back then was, are these numbers statistically significant?
I think they are, because the end number for Virginia is every single school system. So we're, we're talking about a very large number, and with a 4 percent difference is quite significant. If we're talking about 1 percent or 2 percent, I would hesitate, but with four, with 4 percent, it's significant.
Yeah, that's what actually I was referring to, was the 1 percent uptick that we're showing between school year 15 and 16 and the last school year, the 87, 87 to 88 percent.
Now, the numbers between 87 and 88 could be accounted for just variance, but if you're comparing between the state and, and Arlington, it's statistically significant. But in terms of whether 87 and 88, whether those changes, those may not be significant based on a whole host of confounding variables.
Okay. Thanks. And then can you go to slide 10, please?
Sure.
And this question is really for, I think you've got the same matrix on the next four slides or something, but my first question is, where did the, where's the recommendation coming from?
The recommendations come from two sets. One is from our program evaluation, some of those questions come from, and then based on what our needs are, from our advisory committee, from our lead teachers meeting, from surveys, a whole host of things that allow us to develop those recommendations based on best practices and what are the current needs and trends in our programs.
And so, how did you, what do you, do you have four? Is that what it is, four recommendations? And so how did you determine that it would be these four would be recommendations from all of that input that you just described?
So, the safety one kinda was born, if you recall, from the unfortunate accident over at Fairfax County where several students were injured. And as a result of that, our science office wants to take a proactive approach rather than a reactive approach. And we reached out and collaborated with Facilities and Operations, working with the APS Safety Manager Coordinator, David Roberts, as well as Terry Carson, the Risk Manager for our school division, in terms of what is it, what is our current state in terms of safety? What are areas that we can work on so that we don't ever have any kind of accidents or minimize it as much as possible? And where do we, what do we need to do to get to that point? So that's how we developed that as a recommendation, and safety, I think, is paramount, because if we don't have safety, nothing else matters.
Right. Yeah, I, I agree. And I'm glad that was a top recommendation. And the other ones, I mean, how did you, you must have had a whole bunch of input that could have led you to a bunch of different recommendations. How did you, you know, decide on, on the four that you decided, well, the other three?
Those are the four that I think we have a critical need the most. Several of them are right from our program evaluation. For instance, the pathways to provide our students with multiple ways to earn credit for graduation. It goes back to the strategic plan in terms of helping all students succeed. And one of the data that we looked at is the gap in terms of graduation, in terms of success for our students, especially our, our Hilt students, our ESOL Hilt students. What we're finding is that, looking at data, a lot of our students are struggling to get the graduation credits needed for on-time graduation or even graduation at all. And what we've learned is that a lot of the courses that we're providing, which are wonderful, they provide the foundation for our students, but they're not getting those credits counted towards graduation through the diploma requirement. So we're looking at different pathways to support our students, to get those foundational knowledge, to get the, the language development, at the same time, also getting the credit so that they can graduate. So it's a combination of looking at data, looking at this APS strategic plan, and how we can get to the point in terms of helping all of our students become successful.
Okay. Thank you. And so these areas where there, there are no more next steps, does that mean that those action steps are, have been completed?
Yes. So the things that we've talked about, so developed, I'll give you an example, developed the framework for Emergency Management Plan booklet for the outdoor lab. This year, our outdoor lab co-directors worked with both the APS Safety Coordinator and the Risk Manager, so the framework is now in place. What we're going through is a process of refinement on the Emergency Management Plan booklet, having several iterations with the science staff as well as Facilities and Operations staff with the delivery date of fall. So, yes, to answer your questions, anything that's not, anything, anything that says action steps to date, those have been completed. And then the next steps are things that we're hoping to complete between now and the fall or the spring of 2019.
Oh, I see. Okay. Thank you. So one more question. And you'd mentioned the outdoor lab a couple of times, so I was wondering if you can give us some insight into what the future plans are for the outdoor lab, because we're fortunate enough to have that nonprofit, the, the partner, Arlington Outdoor Education Association, who owns the land and, you know, is a, a strong partner with us. And they have had that 50-year history of land there and a relationship with APS. So what do we foresee as, you know, where this is gonna go and the next steps and, you know, things like that? Because I know they're, you know, committed to that partnership, and as we're growing, it's putting strains on what's possible there because of facilities and everything else. So if you could, you know, expand a little bit on that, I'd appreciate it.
So, as we all know, the outdoor lab is an amazing, amazing resource for our students. But at the same time, we're also hitting capacity, similar to the capacity issue that we have in our school buildings. We also have capacity issues over at the outdoor lab. Right now, the outdoor lab is at full capacity. Similar to the planetarium calendar, we post our outdoor lab calendar so that we know exactly, schools, teachers, families, parents know exactly which school goes to which date. Looking at projections for the upcoming year, as we continue to grow, the, the only way for us to keep the program is to focus on areas that is, is the, the key areas of the AOA. So I've had, I had the opportunity to meet with the AOA and look at what are the program, what are the grade levels that are attending the outdoor lab? And given the capacity issues, I've asked them, what are the priorities in terms of if we have to reallocate the dates? Their response was that they want to prioritize at all the grade levels, first of all, but if we have to reallocate, they would like to keep the third and fifth grade intact. Our science office believes the same idea too, because at the elementary level, it's, it's a very, a great opportunity for our students to learn about nature and have that experience. Looking forward into the next few years, because of the capacity issue, most likely we will have to reallocate the middle school slots to make the elementary school slots whole. So what that means is to give the slots from the seventh-grade program to, for the third and fifth grade. Because what's happening is that we have third grade and fifth grade classes from two sections to three, or classes, let's say at Taylor, where you have three classes historically that are now have four sections. So in order to accommodate all of those students, we have to give them more days. I hope that answers your question.
Mostly, yeah. Is there any idea about expansion of facilities and then, you know, staff or resources that would be able to better accommodate? I mean, I think what I heard in what you just said is that because of our enrollment growth, we're necessarily narrowing the outdoor lab options for the students. And so I'm wondering if, you know, we've got a plan or an idea for expansion of facilities and then, you know, augment that with extra staff and be able to at least maintain and hopefully expand to different grade levels?
We do have a plan. Of course, it will require funding. One of the most prominent plan or key ideas, deals that we have is to have concurrent programs at the outdoor lab, which would serve more students. And when I say concurrent programs, meaning that they would have to have two buses coming out at the same time, and one of the bus, let's say, may be serving a third-grade program, and another bus may be serving a fifth-grade program at different sections or, or parts of the outdoor lab. So those, we would have, we would need staffing for coverage and transportation for that to happen. And again, those, those would require funding, and I know that there are budgetary restrictions, especially in, in, in a year like this. And I know that there are budgetary restrictions, especially in a year like this.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Van Dorn?
Just to piggyback on that, I understand that we're, you focused that part of the conversation on the outdoor lab. But we do have a variety of really excellent nature centers in Arlington. So I hope that we think flexibly if we're up against a wall on the, on the budget as we work that out. But there, we sometimes forget that we have these great centers that are sometimes within walking distance of our schools. I really just wanted to say thank you. I'm very impressed with the way you look at where we need to go, look at our priorities, target your resources, and get results. It's just really amazing. And thank you, 'cause I see it at the school level. I see it with my children at the school level and throughout the system. And there are some tough nuts that you've cracked, like serving the ESAL Hilt students and helping them with vocabulary and moving them along. You can see those results. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you. And I also want to add that we are in conversations, we had a couple of conversations with the nature center, also looking at the possibility of using resources over there. In fact, we have a meeting at 10 o'clock tomorrow with representatives from there over at SciFAX to look at what are options for us to leverage the county resources and also to give our students that outdoor learning experience. But thank you.
Ms. Talento?
Dr. Lee, first of all, I want to commend you on a wonderful presentation. I really appreciate the information that you shared and the thoroughness and precision of your answers to our questions. Thank you very much. It was really a great presentation. I'm curious, there was a recommendation, I don't know if it was from the committee or at some point where if we obtained one additional FTE for the outdoor lab, we would be able to reinstate the high school dates back to, I think it was 40 that were missing, and build an additional 10 days for elementary schools that can be used as makeup days? And we would need to increase transportation to accommodate that. So my question would be, considering our enrollment growth, if we had added that one FTE, would, how long would that sustain us? Do you have an answer? Is it, are you, are we thinking that we're gonna need one FTE every year? Every two years, considering how we're growing? So that would be my first question. And then the second question would be, how much can the outdoor lab accommodate? So is it a matter of space at the outdoor lab, or is it a matter of FTEs, or is it both? And I recognize you may not be prepared to answer these questions. So at the, if you're not, I'm happy to take it as a follow-up. But just trying to understand as we look at this budget, as well as future years, in the importance that we have, that we focus here on the outdoor lab for our students.
So this a lot has to do with other factors. And the biggest factor is the AOEA. We have been in communication with them. And they are interested in expanding the outdoor lab in terms of facilities to accommodate more students. And one of the key questions is that they're wondering, or they wanted to get a commitment on in terms of whether, if they are building, are we providing the FTE resources? So it's kind of a situation of who's gonna move first in terms of providing that expansion. And to the first part of your question, if we add an FTE, that would move us in for the next, at least for the next three years, given the number projections, if our number projections are correct. And I know that it may fluctuate, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate. That's very helpful. And I do want to again, thank you for the last recommendation that you're working on, the environmental science for upcoming school year and the multiple pathways to graduation. I'm very grateful for that work you're doing. So, thank you.
Mr. Goldstein has a quick follow-up.
I'm sorry if I gotta ask, you were talking about your recommendations that had flowed from an evaluation, report, department evaluation?
Yes, the program evaluation that we did three, four years ago.
Four years ago. That was my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It was quick. This is a board that loves science and loves teaching and learning. And they made it through a budget hearing, and a lot of, and we're doing construction next. So we enjoy stretching out and talking about what matters most, which is what's happening with our students. So I hope you don't mind that we're sort of keeping you with a lot of questions and comments. So I just have a couple that I want to ask as well. So first of all, I think we were all sad to miss the Regional Science Fair. It is a great event. And we have sent kids all the way to the Intel national competition. So best of luck to these guys to get there as well. I just want to ask about two areas, and they are very related to the budget. The first is the proposed budget reduction in content lead teachers. And I think there's been, this is something, we heard a lot of comments during the public hearing. I believe it's the case that the actual proposed reduction refers to elementary. And one of the areas, one of the content lead teachers who would be reduced out would be the science, elementary science. And I wondered what, what you think the implications of that would be?
The elementary science lead teacher plays a major role in supporting a lot of the programs. They coordinate the outdoor lab. So when we send out the dates, they need to work with their team. They coordinate the textbook resources, as well as the planetarium. So we have a wonderful planetarium program where they also coordinate that with their colleagues. Our scientists in the classroom, each year, we have a new group of scientists who's willing to commit for a year. So they would work with the scientists in terms of the, with their principal, with the volunteer forms, and also help distribute where that scientist go in the school, whether the scientist work at a specific class or a grade level. So the responsibility is extremely large. I think without that position, then those responsibilities would have to be delegated to someone else. Some of our teachers would volunteer. I don't think all of them would, because our teachers are stretched. Sometimes those responsibilities may end up going to the principal or the assistant principal. But those are very critical responsibilities to make sure that our programs run smoothly.
That's very helpful. Thank you. And my other question is also about what we heard at the budget hearing. There was a comment from someone who was on the science advisory committee talking about their recommendation for an outdoor learning coordinator. And I, if I recall correctly from that committee, a number of their recommendations were about outdoor learning. So I wondered, is that an area, we're very strong, as many of my colleagues have already mentioned, we're doing a lot in science, and I love all the dual enrollment and the new courses and the summer courses and things like that. But I wonder if, what would, what would we get with an outdoor learning coordinator? You know, what are we missing?
So, the outdoor learning coordinator would play a role in terms of if the outdoor lab wasn't going to be expanded. Our thinking is that this person would serve as the outdoor lab staff out at the nature centers, where they would receive the buses. And the teachers and students would come to either Long Branch or Gulf Branch, and they would conduct these activities with these students as if they were conducting the activities when they're at the outdoor lab.
I didn't know that. Okay, so they, their jobs would, they would be out at the nature centers, receiving students from the different schools? And again, doing, and we, that would be, all schools would then be expected to participate in that? Or would it be by choice?
And that depends on how the outdoor lab looks, situation looks. Because the idea is that if there are no dates available, or given the last few weeks where there are cancellations, then schools that have lost the outdoor lab dates will have priority. And then we could also add in other grade levels so that they have that outdoor learning experience. The, the resources at, in, with Arlington County is tremendous. And I think it's a great idea for us to use it and take advantage, leverage it as much as we can. But we want to do that in a very thoughtful manner, where when school programs are out there, that they have a meaningful program and not just walking around.
And offhand, you may or may not know this, offhand, we have some schools that somehow have allocated, or have someone who kind of does outdoor learning for them. Do you know how many elementary schools? Do you know how many schools we have that are doing that?
I could think of about two or three. And some of those are, excuse me, are supported through PTA. The one that I could think of right offhand is Jamestown.
Jamestown, right.
So they would, they have a person who focuses on the outdoor gardens, where they would provide instructional support that way.
So it's, it's Jamestown, we have Campbell that does, and Campbell can, goes to a nature center fairly regularly. But the other elementary schools don't then really get those opportunities to?
Right. And one of the issues also is the transportation, the location.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you. Yes, another.
I'm sorry, I'm confused by this. I thought PTAs were not able to provide funding for staffing in APS. How, how does that work?
I'm not sure, but I know that, that Jamestown has a support staff that provides.
I'd like a follow-up on that, please.
Let me look into that, yeah.
Ms. Talento?
I just wanted to follow up on Dr. Cannon's question. If we did have an outdoor learning coordinator, would that provide also more frequent opportunities for elementary schools to go locally to outdoor learning? And then I ask that, considering that we still need local bus transportation and accommodation. But is that a realistic way to look at it? Or would it really be focused on supporting the outdoor learning through, by supporting the outdoor lab and the enrollment growth? Or would it be a combination?
I think it would be a combination. One of the things we want to make sure is that we keep the curriculum standard. So the curriculum that we have out at the outdoor lab, we want to make sure that our students who are going to the nature centers would have that same curriculum. But also providing additional options for our secondary students.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're about to, about to move on. Thank you so much, Dr. Lee. And I'd like to recognize Ms. Putnam for coming this evening, to Director of Teaching and Learning. And did you bring any other staff that we should recognize?
They're not here, but they, they're incredible.
I know you have a stellar staff that you work with.
Yes, we're very appreciative of our staff.
Yes, definitely. So thank you so much.
And thank you for your support with STEM education.
Absolutely. Thank you.